Seeing none, move into our first presentation to COVID-19 update by our Director of Public Health.
Good evening, Council. Charles Chima, Public Health Director. I'm here today to give an update at your request on the status of COVID-19 pandemic in our community. As we know, so to kind of put things in context, go back to the beginning of the pandemic around the March of 2020. I would see, if you look at active cases as well as the hospitalizations, that the surge we had last November, December up to January was kind of the highest so far. But the other thing you observed from the historical graph is that we're currently seeing the second highest surge in infections and hospitalizations. So the last time I was here in September thereabouts, as at that time, we considered that the second highest surge. But we have since passed the level we were in September, so the cases have continued to rise as well as hospitalizations. So things are slightly worse they are today than they were in September. So as I said today, this is the second highest surge we're seeing since the beginning of the pandemic. But again, the good news is that it's not the situation where we had last year where it was, you know, was very unpredictable. We can see very much that a lot of the cases that are especially those, the severe ones that have been hospitalized, and those ones ended up in ICUs heavily among the unvaccinated. So that's part of why a lot of our effort has focused on advocating and increasing resources to make vaccinations easier. But if we look, so that's kind of the general trend going back to the beginning of the pandemic. If we look specifically in the last three months, again, we'll notice that after, so in the summer, so if you go back to the previous slide, in the summer of this year, there was really a significant decrease in cases as well as hospitalizations. But that, things began to change quickly at the end of summer when we started seeing the new surge that was fueled by the Delta variant. Things got a bit better in November, so there was a bit of dip which you will see on the graphs. There's a decrease, but it tends to then kind of return to the pre-surge levels. So quickly, within a month, we started seeing a rise again in cases as well as hospitalizations. And we expect this trend to continue for a while, especially considering the new variants, Omicron, that is kind of rapidly spreading in the U.S. and across the world. So it might be a while before we get out of the current surge with the new variants. The last two weeks, things have remained pretty steady. Hospitalizations kind of reached a peak and stayed about eighty to hundred in the last few weeks, which is much higher than we've seen in the last three to six months, you know. Prior, as at the last update, we've probably seen about fifty to sixty hospitalizations a day. In the last two weeks, it's been around hundred hospitalizations per day. Today it's eighty-nine. So we'll see if that becomes a trend or if it goes back to the current rates. So a bit of, I know this has been in the news a lot and it's raising a lot of concern and people are worried, what does this mean to say we have a new variant? And what do we need, do we need to do anything differently? How do we prepare as a community? So first is, in the U.S. as I said today, so there's a more recent update on data that shows that, as I said today, now Omicron is now the dominant variant nationwide. So among the new cases that we're seeing, the circulating virus right now is primarily the Omicron variant. And one, there's still a lot to be learned. It's very new and imagine, I think the first case in the U.S. probably early December. So it's just so new that we don't have enough information to know what the long-term impact on the pandemic will be. But evidence is showing that it's much more transmissible. So we know the Delta was much more transmissible than the original strain. This variant is even far more transmissible than Delta. So that also is gonna, that is also evident in the data. Within a few weeks of getting to the U.S., it's kind of swept across the country as you can see from the map. Besides us and a couple of other states, it's now the dominant strain in the U.S. locally. From the data that, you know, the genomic surveillance, it appears Delta is still the main strain in South Dakota. But you will expect that to change again quickly following the trends with the rest of the country in the next few weeks to months. Again, we know it's much more transmissible. There is not enough evidence yet to make a final determination on whether it's less severe. Some initial data, especially from Southern Africa, suggests it might be less severe. But that might have to do with demographics of the people that are infected because that tends to be a younger population in Southern Africa. So we don't know what that will look like here in the U.S., whether it will end up being less severe as anticipated. But also, even if it's less severe, it's important to note that this could have, and again, we see what happens, but it could have an impact on hospitalizations because if you're having a lot of new cases, even if it's less severe, if you're having a significant number of people infected, it just means that the likelihood of having, you know, a few people who might need hospitalization to manage their infection will increase with having much more rapid increase in cases. So generally speaking, we will expect to have a surge in cases and likely hospitalizations from this variant if it continues the way it's moving right now. As I said today, an update on vaccination. So we continue to make progress. We're not in at levels that we'll feel comfortable with yet, but we'll continue to make progress. At the end of summer this year, we were in the late forties, so we were about forty-seven point five percent vaccinated in terms of those that have received at least one dose of any of the vaccines. This is the two counties, Minnehaha and Lincoln. We continue to make progress. We'll move from that to close to sixty-three percent as I said today. That's about hundred and sixty-four thousand plus people who have received at least one dose out of the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand people in both counties. Just an update on some of the efforts that we continue to work on. So through our collaboration with the state, the state as we know, through the SDIRS, that's Immunization Information System, the entity that has the data on vaccinations. So but we have a very good working relationship. They've been able to share some of those vaccination information, which has allowed us to create a new dashboard. We know we work with a lot of partners in the community to continue to advocate for vaccines. But part of that information that we needed was to kind of understand, you know, how to focus on, use a precision approach to target our efforts, to understand which populations and which neighborhoods or communities kind of have lower vaccination rates, to know where to focus our efforts on. And part of what we see is, if we look at the city of Seaford, so this is a map of the two county area. This is available on the COVID dashboard, you know, that is publicly available on the city's website. But what we've done is to create a new dashboard on the general dashboard that shows vaccination rates by census tract. So this is much smaller units than the county. That allows us then to be able to zone in on those areas of the city, particularly in the northeast and northwest that, as we can see from the data, has lower vaccination rates. So the blue, the blue colors have higher vaccination rates. So that's in the sixty to seventy or over seventy percent, depending on how the shade of blue. But then the yellow and the red shows lower vaccination rates in the graph. So again, you can see a much better version of this on the city website. What this allows us is to then focus on those census tracts that have, that are lagging behind and kind of have more intense efforts, some of which include, you know, we have an effort that is called, you know, a campaign that we call the Give It A Shot Seaford, which is just, you know, the brand name for our mobile vaccine clinic. And what we do, we've done is we've partnered with Sioux Area Metro as well as the city planning services to, again, using some of that data, understand which communities that we need to target. And we're having more and more community outreachers and also advocating partners, nonprofits, as well as the health system partners to do the same, kind of focusing on those areas of our community that need a bit more support to increase the vaccination rates. So we, I want to use this opportunity to, again, pass information across to the community to say, we have the resources, we have the will, and we have the, you know, the people to make vaccinations easier. So if any business, which I know we've had some business requests and we've gone out to those business entities to help their staff get vaccinated, we are so willing to do house visits if necessary. So whatever it takes to provide vaccine access, we're willing to do that. We're having events in the evenings, we're having events in the weekends, again, to make sure that everyone, just by their circumstance, that even if, no matter your work schedule, we can find a time that works for you to get vaccinated. So we're more than willing, if someone, you can go to our website, to the city website, on the COVID page, you will find the link where you go request for us to hold a vaccine event at your church or at your neighborhood or at your business. We also, you can also call 211 if you're not, you know, not comfortable with using the website. You can just call 211 and 211 can help you get your information and then relay that to the health department. And health department will make arrangements to go out and make that happen. We've seen some success with this and some of, you know, we've been at some of the grocery stores. We continue to, you know, a lot of people have been able to use this to get their booster doses. But we have also seen quite a few number of people who have, you know, studied their immunization series through the mobile clinics. And we continue to have a more intensive, you know, outreach is planned for the early part of next year to see that we target again those census tracts that are lagging behind. So I will invite the Communications Coordinator for the Mayor's Office, Brian, to give a bit of update on the communications campaign that the city, the city council is aware of that we've been doing since the early part of this year.
Thanks, Dr. Chima. He's a bit taller than me. There we go. Okay, so thanks for having me here today. I'm just here to recap the COVID marketing campaign that we've been doing since March of 2021. So since the start of this campaign, we've really been focused on having a multilingual campaign, recognizing the need to share this across the community with multiple languages. So the billboard you see in front of you, we actually have had this translated into five different languages, the top five in the school district. So we've been sharing this across the community. So the number that you see up there, four point six million impressions, so that's the time that our message has been served on a platform and it's been viewed by an individual. So we've been sharing the message across the digital billboards, social media platforms. So really, again, recognizing the need for this to be a multilingual campaign across platforms and really working to stretch our dollars across the campaign. So you can see the platforms that we've used in front of you, Facebook, Instagram. I think I mentioned the last time we started using Snapchat, so really recognizing the need to reach a younger demographic. We also began running videos, so worked with several community members on some PSAs. Also had the opportunity to share that with the Spanish-speaking audience and film one of those in Spanish with Alex Ramirez. And we were able to produce those in-house. So really taking advantage of some of our internal resources as well. So this latest message that you see in front of you, make a plan to get your vaccine. So we've shifted our message this last phase to really be more on take action, really more of an urgent message to the community, just recognizing the need to really share the importance and the urgency of getting vaccinated. This last slide, you can see the second slide translated in Spanish. So our social media messages were translated into Spanish as well. So the plan going forward, knowing that we've used the full hundred thousand dollars that was needed to be spent within 2021. So with these messages, we can continue the look and feel of this campaign, change the messages as it fits the need to adapt. That's really been what we've been doing throughout this campaign is continuing to adapt our message. As Dr. Chima shared, the census tracts allow us to really focus more going forward on our messaging, on where there's opportunity for increasing vaccinations in the community. So I'll let him speak to kind of their continued efforts, but just wanted to share an overview of the campaign with you. Over the past ten months since March, we were really able to get this campaign up to speed pretty quickly, working with fresh produce in town. And again, continuing to adapt our messaging using multiple platforms, talking with community members, and really elevating the message across our community. So let Dr. Chima speak further. I think he has a message on holiday safety.
So on the last slide, I just wanted to again reiterate, we are things done today and kind of really use the opportunity to speak to, you know, our community members regards to, if we pay attention to what is happening, we'll see that there's quite an increase in cases. It's already happening in the UK, that's United Kingdom. And we're seeing that in a lot of communities in the U.S. already, where we're seeing rapid increase in cases with the Omicron variant. And the question is, so what can we do to, you know, prepare for this? And it's the same approach we've been using. Luckily, early data shows that, especially, you know, if you, so what is being recommended right now by the CDC is, if you got the Yancin vaccine, it's kind of encouraged to consider the Modern or the Pfizer booster because it tends to boost your immunity more if you make some match in that context. But also, even it's been shown that if you've received any, either as a booster or as your primary series, the mRNA vaccines, that it continues to protect against severe diseases from the Omicron variant. So even as we are expecting a new surge in infections, if majority of people have received their two shots and the booster doses, without having at least some exposure to the mRNA vaccines, we expect to have a high level of protection against severe disease. We might see more cases, we might see more people that are vaccinated coming down with infection. But again, you wouldn't expect majority, you wouldn't expect many of them to end up in the hospital if they are vaccinated. So that remains the primary, if someone asks today, what is the primary thing that I can do to keep myself and my family safe in anticipation of this variant becoming the dominant variant in the next few weeks? This remains the single most important thing that you can do is to make that decision, get vaccinated, get boosted if it's already six months when you got your mRNA vaccine. If it's two months or more when you got your Yancin vaccine, it's time to get boosted. And again, to make it clear, there are proof vaccines available, so if you're five years and older, there is a vaccine for you. And if you are sixteen and older, you are eligible to get a booster if it's already, you know, six months when you got to mRNA or two months for the Yancin vaccine. Testing is also another, remains another important component of this because the earlier we can know someone who is exposed or, you know, infected, then be able to isolate, then the less likely it is that it can transmit to others and continue to drive infections up. So it remains a strategy, actually, the federal government is moving in the next few weeks. I think they'll be pushing a significant effort to make free tests available. We know a lot of people have been spending a lot of their personal resources in buying testing kits and it's kind of getting expensive for some individuals. So part of what the federal government is working on is ordering a lot of vaccine, home-based testing and making those available through primary care clinics where you can pick up free test kits and be able to use, especially during the holidays. And also, facial coverage and limiting guarantees continue to remain a part of the effort to, again, reduce the community spread. So as we celebrate the holidays, it's important to have that at the back of our minds. COVID is not done with us yet. It's still in the community. We have a new variant and we just need to remain cautious. Again, the message is not fear but caution. It's to think about it as we go, plan for our holiday travel or for plan for family gatherings. Think about crowd size, limit indoor crowd sizes and wear facial coverage if you have in a public setting indoors. Again, with that, we're happy to take questions from the council. But as I said today, again, to summarize, we have about sixty-three percent vaccinated. We believe that number will slightly be higher because we know that data does not include data that goes into the federal system. So if someone got from the IHS or from, you know, any of the federal partners, that data doesn't get reported directly to the state. It goes directly to the Fed. So some of that is not being captured from Minnehaha and Lincoln. But based on the rest of us that get our vaccinations from either some of the various false community health or the health departments or other local partners, all of that is in the state system.
Thank you. Questions, council members? Counselor Kylie?
I have a question, actually a number of them, so I will yield to any counselors at some point during my questioning. Doctor, I have a relative who was just diagnosed with COVID. Received the first two Pfizer vax, shots of Pfizer in the week of the six-month waiting period to receive the booster contracted COVID. So did not get the booster. Question is, how long after recovery from COVID that he's dealing with now can he receive the booster?
So I have to look at the recent guidelines, but I know typically it's not, to your point is if someone is having an active infection. Again, generally recommended, if you're having an active infection or if you've received, if you received the monoclonal antibodies in the last ninety days, it's recommended to wait for a period for that to wash out before you get the vaccination. So I can, I need to look up the specific waiting period for if you're having an active infection. But you probably want to wait for a few weeks after the infection to get back to vaccination. But I think for the monoclonal antibodies, if you receive one in the last ninety days, probably want to wait at least a ninety-day period before getting vaccinated. But when you're having an active infection, yeah, it's not encouraged, it's not a fresh time to get vaccinated. Probably want to wait a few weeks after that.
So he should wait at least two weeks, fourteen days prior to?
Yeah, and I can get a specific, well, the specific guideline today from the CDC. Sunday, do you have that readily available? Yeah, please.
Sandy France, Public Health Manager. Good afternoon, counselors. So the person would need to be out of isolation and feeling better. So they're going to need to wait at least ten days after their confirmation of illness, right? If they received, if they did not receive monoclonal antibody, as long as they're feeling better and their symptoms are getting better, they can go ahead and get their booster under the advice of their physician. If they receive monoclonal antibody, they have to defer for ninety days after their infusion.
Sure, and at this point, they have not received the monoclonal antibodies. So it would be at least, at least ten, ten to, okay, ten days following. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator.
And whoever wants to respond to this, we continue to have individuals that contact us and come to public input that deny COVID even exists. The vaccine was manufactured by the government to track us, to keep tabs on us, that the vaccine was not thoroughly tested, that it was rushed, claims that we're in violation of the Nuremberg Code, claiming we are experimenting on humans. What, what kind of response do you have to those particular reasons and others? I mean, there is a multitude of others as to why they shouldn't get vaccinated.
So my response will be, first is, I would say we are lucky. We're lucky to be living in the greatest country on earth, right? And it's a privilege because I think we need to put things in context for people to understand. We're dealing with a global pandemic, but there are too many countries that do not have anywhere near the resources that we have. That I don't have, I've not been as lucky. I'll give you an example. I have, I have first cousins, I have, and I have a sister who lives in Australia. And even though she works with a husband in the healthcare system, she's a nurse, the husband is a doctor. It took forever, it was only until recently before their children, their adult children became eligible for the vaccines because they didn't have as much supply as we do here in the U.S. So even though they were in the healthcare system, they had to endure the terror of having their children be exposed to this for a long time before they became eligible for the vaccine, just because there wasn't enough vaccine supply compared to what we have in the U.S. So I would say that absolutely, we should be, you know, many ways grateful for American ingenuity because it is very rare and it's understandable why there is concern to say, hey, how do we have a vaccine so suddenly? Well, I think the answer is, you know, we have innovators, right? We have the science community that is able to respond quickly to a threat like this. So we are lucky to have had, to live in a time where the country has the capacity and the scientific ingenuity to have come up with a very effective vaccine within a short time. And I think in many ways, we're grateful for that. And we've seen evidence that these vaccines are very effective. It's rare, again, think about other diseases that we know that we get vaccinated against. It is rare to see a vaccine that is so effective, particularly at preventing severe outcomes that we have seen with these current vaccines. So this is, in many ways, in modern history, this is the most rigorously tested and monitored vaccine in terms of the scrutiny that has been paid to the adverse effects and to see that these vaccines are really safe and effective. And they continue to update. So for example, as you noticed in the last two weeks, the CDC has updated its guidelines to show that there is some degrees of differences in effectiveness between the vaccines. And they now have a different recommendations about which ones they consider priority based on, based on the science. So the scientific community is absolutely paying attention and is taking these issues of safety and effectiveness very seriously. And I would encourage everyone who has concerns or questions to please reach out to your personal physicians. And if you don't have one, false community health, you know, we have physicians and we have that willingness and, you know, and availability to schedule appointment with anyone who has questions to have a conversation with a medical provider about the vaccines.
Okay, thank you. So it was thoroughly tested before being released to the public. In fact, I think just yesterday or today marks the one-year anniversary that it was released to the general public, phased in. And in that, in that one-year period, we have literally had millions and millions and millions of individuals who have received this vaccine and with a tiny, tiny percentage that have had exhibited any type of issues. And those that have had issues, it's hard to determine whether they can be attributed to the vaccine or something else, some other condition that they would have experienced regardless if they had the vaccine or not. What about the individual, and this is a question I asked the last time you appeared before us. This is my last question, at least for now. I've had, I've had COVID, so I do not need the vaccine.
That's a genuine concern and the logic is understandable. However, the evidence and the data shows that immunity from natural infection is unpredictable. So not everyone who can be much more reliant on immunity from the vaccine. So we know what happens when you get a vaccine. Not everyone who gets the disease gets a natural, a significant natural immunities. In some people, it went very quickly. In some people, it might last a few months. So it's very unpredictable to determine, okay, I had infection, does that mean I'm protected or not? The second point I make on that is, it's been shown also with the new variant, with the Omicron variant, because the virus has mutated significantly, it's so much different from the original strain. So if you had COVID last year, it has been shown that the natural immunity is doing a worse job with the Omicron variant compared to the vaccine. So if you're relying on the immunity from the original strain last year, we're dealing with a different virus now in terms of the significant mutation that has occurred in this virus. And it's been shown that immunity is wearing very rapidly for those who are relying on natural immunity. So the best way to prepare and protect yourself and your family is to get vaccinated.
In fact, the influenza vaccine that we received on a yearly basis, that is always altered in an effort to deal with the, the info, what is the expert's best prediction as to what type of influenza is going to be impacting the population? So that, that changes year to year as well.
Yeah, that's, that's the nature of viruses. That what viruses do is they mutate. So as they are spreading in the world and they are replicating, errors tend to occur in the replication process. So you end up with new versions of the virus that could be quite significantly different in characteristics from the original one. So the good, with vaccines, you can study that and modify your vaccines to respond to that. But with natural infection, if you're relying on the previous year's infection, then your body doesn't know, doesn't recognize that this virus has changed. I mean, you may not get significant protection from that previous infection.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That last one was a statement. It was not a question.
Mr. Silber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, for the presentation. I appreciate how hard you've pushed this topic since you've taken your position. Didn't you have a goal when you started off right away, eighty percent or ninety percent you were hoping, or what was the number again?
Yeah, I think I was, so initially when we started pushing our new, again, we've been doing a messaging campaign since early this year. But when we started, we renewed efforts in late June, we were at forty-seven point five percent. So the goal was, how quickly can we get to seventy to eight, in that seventy to eighty percent range, which I think we're getting closer. As I said today, like I said, we are sixty-three percent.
Good, good. So the marketing money in that, that we, that was put to this, that's been, that'll all be used by the end of this year?
Yes, sir.
So what's the plan ahead? Are we going to continue a campaign or try to refund? What are we doing from here?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have, we have, so we have funding from the CDC through the state. So there's a specific funding for, you know, you're building our public health workforce but also responding to the pandemic. So at the moment, we continue to have funds to continue to support our marketing campaigns beyond the current exercise that just concluded. So we don't anticipate any shortage of funds in the short term. However, if in the future we run out of the resources that we have, we'd be more than happy to come to the council and say, hey, can you provide us some support to continue this effort? But for now, with the funding we have from the state through the city, from the CDC through the state, we have the resources to continue the campaign in the new year.
Do most avenues work with us too as far as like donating time and money or whether it's space or TV time or radio? Where are all the different avenues we're doing? Will they, how do you put it?
Say that again, sorry.
Do they donate time towards this? Like if you're paying so much for so many ads or this or billboards or this, are they, I don't know if it's kind of PSA-type money I keep thinking, or those type things? Do you get a lot of stuff from businesses where they're helping on their end too?
Yeah, so part of what is changing, so I know, so yeah, the question is about donating. I know in the previous campaign, we did a lot of billboards and kind of a lot of general mass messaging. Part of the focus we're moving with the new approach, we're taking what we call a precision approach. It's really targeting, you know, populations and communities that are lagging behind. So we are moving more to social media and use So we are moving more to social media and using less the billboards because we really need to focus on the areas. If you see obviously in our community, you have some census tracts that are still at 50%, whereas some are already at 70, 70 something percent vaccinated. So it makes more sense to spend resources where the need is more. So we're doing a bit more, you know, targeted approach. So we're going to be using more of social media in the next round of our campaigns.
Yeah, just hoping we're getting the most we can out of our money and we can keep pushing it. My final question is, so somebody's not feeling well and they're thinking, well, I was thinking of getting a booster, but I'm not sure, I'm not feeling great, maybe I should go get a COVID test, but I want to get a booster. I mean, if they're not feeling well already, should they go get a COVID test first before they go get a booster? If they were going to have one scheduled, anyway, go get the booster? Or is there a, I know there was a timing question.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think if already having symptoms, you know, that might be consistent with COVID, I think the best thing to do first is to get tested because you want to rule out an ongoing and active infection and deal with that first. When you take care of that, then we come, because think about it, vaccination is for prevention. If you already have COVID today, then the best thing to think about is treatment. And that's, it's good that you raised that question because the community also needs to be aware that the hospital systems continue to encourage and promote the use of monoclonal antibodies. So if someone is feeling sick today, to answer your question, the best decision is to get tested, right? Get tested and isolate and wait for your result. Because if you're positive and if you begin to experience a worsening of symptoms, then it's best to go in and then get the treatments that are available to reduce your chances of having the severe form of the disease. But once you're done dealing with that and you recover, then you go back to preventive mode, which is then get vaccinated to prevent the chances that you may get infected again or get sick.
Gotcha. Thank you, appreciate it.
Counsel, other questions? Well, I have a few at this point. You've talked about the, we had the original variant, then we had the Delta variant, now the the new variant that's out there that's highly transmissible. Is this a trend we're going to see that there's going to be a next variant and it's more transmissible? What do you see coming down the road?
Yeah, so that's the nature of viruses, right? Is there will always be variants. The question then is, do we, how many variants of concern that might come up that we don't know? So I say this to point out that there are probably thousands of other variants that have come up that have now risen to, you know, global transmission rate for us to be aware of them or to pay attention to them. Because they mutate and new variants form and they kind of compete with each other regards to which one becomes more dominant than the other. However, once in a while, we have a new one that develops significant characteristics where it's able to dominate the rest and out compete the other viruses out there. So we don't know how many more of this, you know, major variants we're going to see before we are of this pandemic. But with each variant, it changes the dynamics of the pandemic. So for example, if it turns out that you have a variant that is, in some future, that is less severe, then that might change the nature of the pandemic where, you know, you may not, you may not see as much deaths or hospitalizations as you see today. So we don't know, again, at what point we're going to be out of this year. But we know that the more we can get people vaccinated, the closer we are to reduce. Because what happens is when the virus is replicating in unvaccinated people, so kind of wild natural transmission, it's when the other replications happen and when you have new variants in a population. That's why you haven't seen a lot of variants coming up from the US, for example, because we started a vaccination program early. Vaccination, variants tend to come up in communities where you have low vaccination rates, where the virus is able to transmit naturally in the wild and is able to go through all these mutations. So the only way we can get out of all this cycle of new variants the next is by continue to push vaccinations, not just at home, but globally as well, so that we can reduce the likelihood that we have another variant coming from another country into the US.
I have a question on the shots. We have several age ranges in the family that I'm a part of, all the way from me down to the very young. It seems like the younger ones, five, six, seven, I mean, on up, they not getting sick at all from their shots. But some people in the older age group, not me, but some other people have got, they'll take a day or two to recover from a vaccine. Is that something that's common or is it age or is it something else that drives that?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's age alone. There are so many factors, we never can tell. Just like we can't say, you know, besides, obviously, if someone is immunocompromised, right? We know there's a higher chance they might have, you know, because they don't have that ability to develop enough resistance as someone that is not. But besides being immunocompromised, we, you know, it could be very unpredictable who may get a severe form of COVID or not, right? You have some children who really get a really bad form and you have some, you know, older people who just do just fine. The same with the vaccines, we never can tell who gets, you know, significant reactions in terms of feeling sick. However, even for those majority of people, it tends to be, you know, maybe they might have run a fever, they may have a sore arm or they have generalized feeling of ache and pains. And typically, within one to two days, they begin to feel better and that wears away. So we can't tell exactly who is going to have, you know, severe symptoms and may warrant maybe taking a day off of work. However, for the most people, for most people that get vaccinated, it's not a, it doesn't require a vaccination, hospitalization. Typically, it's just take a day off and get, you know, rest from it. Or some people are able to go back right to work after getting vaccinated. We just can't tell who's going to get the severe reaction.
Thank you. One, last question is, when somebody tests positive, are they notified of the variant they have or just that they're positive for the COVID-19?
Yeah, no, all you can tell from the typical tests that are available is, do you have COVID or not? In terms of the variants, so that's genomic surveillance. So that's done at the level of the CDC in this case. So what happens is from the samples, different samples that come to the state, the state takes a random sample and they send it to the CDC to kind of do spot checks to see what variants is predominant in the population. So if you go to your doctor's office or you order a home test, it wouldn't tell you, do you have Omicron or Delta? It would just tell you if you have COVID or not. In terms of the variants, that's something that is done at the surveillance at the back end between the state and the CDC.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, I just, I'll just have one comment that I observed this morning with my wife that we're going into the second holiday season worried about COVID. And it's very disheartening and it seems like there might be a little bit, and it's not only us, it's a lot of people that it's very disheartening and it's not as joyous of a season this year because of that. And I, our conversations, it has been stressful for us, but not as stressful as it's been for your health department and the employees that you have. This has been a very long year, a year and a half for you and for everything that your people have done. And I think I can speak for the whole council when we tell you how greatly we appreciate all the hard work that you have put in to help us get through this and hope that next time you come, the numbers are going back the other way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to our next presentation, which I'm sure will be just exciting as the first.